Okay, could everyone take your seats please? Sorry to ruin everybody's good time, but we have to do this meeting thing here.
Do we have a quorum?
Yeah, we do. Okay. We'll call this meeting order. Will anyone rise please for the invocation? And I think we have Russ, Russ Wynn, are you here? Hey, how you doing? Of course you are.
Let us pray. What a privilege to live and serve in the city of Benita Springs, this wonderful city that we all get to live in. Bless the men and women of this council. Give them the creativity, the insight and wisdom as they tackle the issues that we're facing. Protect our law enforcement officers and firefighters, God, as they serve this community. Pray your blessings on our gathering today in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Councilor Slakka, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Honorable Sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. And roll call please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Yep.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Slakka.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons. Councilman Gibson.
Councilman Lockhart.
Here. Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
All right, okay, and we'll go right to public comment on agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak to us about an agenda item, please come forward. Agenda items only.
For the record, Richard Ferrara, Spring Creek Village, Benita Springs.
Welcome, welcome, Councilor.
Mr. Mayor, good seeing you, members of the council. I'm going to speak on Amendment A. First reading of the public hearing of following ordinances, public comment allowed. An amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4, zoning, to permit single families by right in certain neighborhoods zoned, prohibiting replacement of mobile homes in the interstate exchange area, providing the conflicts of law. The ordinance should allow, in my case, my house was blown away by Hurricane Charlie and I had to replace the home. And in the process, it was a replacement. Had somebody decided to put a so-called stick house or a different configuration, they would have to come before the associations and then the zoning board for a special exception, and then the city council. And it seems rather cumbersome. The citizen, it's an extra expense. It's an extra bureaucracy for that special exception. It should be a staff recommendation, in my opinion, and the community development certainly would never issue a permit if it didn't comply with our zoning laws. So I'm speaking in behalf of that. And as Secretary of the Spring Creek Village Homeowners Association, I think I'm in pretty common ground, a consensus is that we support that. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Thank you very much. My name is David Williams. I reside at 4676 Leyland Lane in Benita Springs, in Spring Creek Village. And I'm also here to support the amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code for Chapter 4, zoning. The amending section using regulations for the mobile home districts to permit single families by the right to certain neighborhoods, Zone MH1, MH2. I'm currently in the process of building a single-family home in Spring Creek Village. I just went to the Board of Directors with my plans, and they accepted those. I would be the first one to do so in Spring Creek Village. And I came to Community Development to get a special exception. And after speaking to them, they told me that I may be interested in waiting because if this passes, which I'm in favor of, it would eliminate me from having to go through three and a half to four months' process of hearings, also $2,000 out of pocket, which to me would be a huge savings for me and for anybody else trying to do the same thing. So I think it's a great amendment. There's a lot of people excited about it in my community. And I know with everything going on with the future of manufactured homes, you know, they're not going to be around much longer. One good storm and they're all gone, and then what are we going to do? We certainly don't want to replace them, if we don't have to, with another manufacturer. And that's something I currently don't want to do. So I'm in support of this, and I thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Debbie Cheeseborough, I'm at 47-
Go ahead, pull that down a little bit more, that way you don't have to stand your toes.
Thank you.
There you go.
4721 Tahiti Drive, Benita Springs, Florida. I also live in Spring Creek Village. I am on the Architecture Committee, and I am speaking on the amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, also number nine. I'm on the Architecture Committee. As you know, that you guys changed this so that you could build for the safety of the public. Someone asked me, I sell real estate, I work for Downing Frye. I know that in the interim of all of this, with us changing our availability to build houses in Spring Creek Village, it's going to make an asset more to that community. On top of that, someone asked me one time, I decided to quit doing things to my house, to my manufactured home because of me being able to build someday if my house ever blows down. One reason, somebody asked me, he goes, "Well, why would you build a house there?" My comment to him was, "Right now, I get evacuated, I get evacuated first. If I build a house here, I don't have to get evacuated, I can stay home just like you do." I believe it's a really good thing if you rescind this special exception, and it's just going to help the whole community all the way around.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the next speaker, please.
Hi, hello lady and gentleman of the council, this is my first time speaking, my name is Debbie Casman-Check.
Welcome.
Thank you. I don't know why I'm so scared, but I am.
Well, there's no reason.
I know, he's, yeah.
Oh, yeah, him, yeah.
I am a property owner on Downs Drive. Mr. Lockhart, Mr. Gucciato has been a great help and helping instrument, at least in my street, in getting the property owners to become involved, become more aware of cleaning up their properties. It is mostly mobile homes in that area, but that's okay, whatever makes everybody happy. My thing is, we've come together as a street of people that don't really talk to each other, that have come together 100% in signing these forms in hopes of getting approval today, of getting the street paved. And I thank you very much for your time.
Well, and thank you.
I need to-
You did really good. You don't seem scared. All right, thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any agenda item? Seeing none, we will go to proclamations and presentations. And right now, could Christine Davlin and Susan Bridges, could you please come forward?
How are you? See you.
Oh, hi. Fancy meeting you here. How you doing? Good to see you again.
Nice to see you as well.
Okay, and this is a certificate of recognition, and it's awarded to the Benita Springs Center of the Arts in recognition for receiving the 2014 Chrisless Award, as presented by the Greater Fort Myers Chamber of Commerce and the Lee County Visitor Convention Bureau, okay, again, to the Benita Center of the Arts. We are so proud, so proud of our Benita Center of the Arts. Please give them a big hand, thank you very much. And Susan, thank you.
Thank you so much. It's wonderful to get an award for something that you absolutely love to do. How unusual is that? Fabulous, we've worked hard and thank you so much.
And one more thing here, while you're here, and I'm going to give this to you.
You're going to love this part, because I'm going to give it back to the mayor because the city of Benita Springs was also nominated for the Business Development category for the Chrisless Awards. So we are very proud, obviously, to have a winner and to have a nominee, both in the same community. So yay again for everything. Now, look at me, because I've got stuff here. Okay, so what I would like to just say real quickly is, obviously, I am representing the Visitor and Convention Bureau, and I just want people that aren't familiar with the Chrisless Awards to understand that it was formed five years ago so that we could actually strengthen the partnership between tourism and business, because ultimately, a visitor will end up becoming a business partner of ours, probably, in some way. And we just think that we needed to form a stronger partnership, really, for the resources and the goodness or the good of our community. So we're so proud in the fifth year for the Cultural Achievement Award. What I love about this is people walk out of the Chrisless Awards every year and go, "Oh, my gosh, I had no idea they were doing so much for the community, and that was just an amazing, amazing presentation." So it really is a learning event, if you will. So I am very proud to be here, and just a small token of appreciation, I have to make sure I give you the right one, from the VCB, for both of you. Well, they're kind of color-coordinated. Anyway. So anyway, again, a big congratulations, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. All right, Steve, if that's edible, don't eat it. That's mine, mine. We have to share with everyone. And at this time, now we have a presentation of our 2014 legislation by Carol Green and our good friend Ashley Stachel, please come forward. No, exams, no.
You know, she's back there going, "Oh, I don't have to, you know, I don't have to do anything." But, and I know that I have been able to convince you all that I write all those reports that you get, right? You all know that, right?
No, Ashley told us you didn't do anything.
Actually, she writes beautiful reports. And I am, because of that, I'm going to just stand down and let her give the report. And I'm here to-
I thought you were doing the good stuff.
I am doing, that's right, I'm doing the good stuff. We do have, we do have some good things to report, and we're very, very pleased that I had an opportunity to call Carl this week because our $250,000 appropriation was signed into law by the governor in the budget. So once again, we have $250,000 coming to the city to help continue with some of our water projects that we have down here. We certainly would like to acknowledge the fact that Councilwoman Martin had an opportunity to sit down with Representative Al Britton and talk to him a little bit and make, and share with him the impact of the economic importance of that project. And we'd also be remiss in not mentioning Matt Caldwell, because Representative Caldwell reached out to us and said, "What can I do to help?", which is something that's remarkable, frankly. And of course, we were quick to share with him what he could do to help, and he did. And he certainly, behind the scenes, helped to make all of that happen. So we certainly want to make sure that he is acknowledged in that regard. Now, do you want to do the other stuff, or do I have other things you want me to do?
Oh, you wanted to do that.
Okay, well, I'm going to do gaming, mainly because of the fact that gaming was an interesting issue this year. They kept having meetings. I had a lot of meetings, they had a lot of meetings across the state even. And they traveled far and wide, took lots of testimony. We had testimony that was included in our comments in that regard. And we worked very closely with Mr. Haverak to make sure that we were coordinating any efforts that we could on the family's behalf and the property that is sitting here in the heart of our city. So we've been able to do that. As the end of session, everything and everyone decided that they needed to stand down because of the fact that the governor is in negotiations with the Seminoles. And we've always known all along that that was going to be a big pivotal point for whatever happens with gaming as it goes forward. We do believe that there will be things that will go forward this year. We know that the governor has been in contact with the Seminoles, they have been negotiating. As of today, we haven't seen any of those negotiations. So we'll have to stay tuned on that behalf, but we did have an opportunity to spend a lot of time with that. The one other thing that I would bring up that was, I think, a win for this session is the fact that fertilizer didn't come up. And we fought fertilizer for the last five years, four years, forever, forever. In the waning moments of session, I had the last 48 hours of session fighting any amendments, et cetera. This year was totally quiet. I know that we did receive an email from Councilwoman Martin again about the fact that our numbers are so good here, which we're very happy about, to be able to share that with the state as we go forward. The one thing that everyone needs to understand is that one of the representatives who has been very active with the fertilizer ordinances and with having this as part of his agenda is now going to be the next Speaker of the House. And Speaker Krista Foley will start out this next year. We need to be very careful and watch very closely as to what's going to happen, because in his backyard of the state, there are a lot of issues, and he is determined to fix those issues. And when he fixes those for his part of the state, it has the potential to impact us too. So we'll be watching that as we go forward. And I get to talk about one more thing, and that is about the incorporation efforts, which we've already been here and talked about. I think everybody understands what happened with that. We were very disappointed in the way that that turned out in the end, because there was ways to fix it. I can promise you, as a former legislator and as someone who's been very active in politics and in legislation for a number of years, there were ways to fix that. Unfortunately, it did not get fixed, as you know. But the letter that was sent to our entire delegation by the mayor on behalf of the city council has clear direction as to how we are going to go forward. We stand ready to make sure that that happens as we go forward, to make sure that anything that we need to do to support the efforts for the city of Benita Springs will be listened to. And we feel very disappointed in the fact that even though we set and laid out a plan on how this could be fixed, it was, is ignored a good word? Well, it didn't happen. How's that? So those were the things that I was going to touch on, and I'm going to let Ashley take over at this point.
Thank you very much. Hey.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick announcement that I am not gaining weight than I'm expecting. So as you see me in the net, no, no, no twins, just one, a little girl.
That was another thing I could give, because that was good news.
Yeah, well, that's the only, I mean, I have doll news, you have all the fun stuff.
She's expecting everyone has to do this.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
And it's a girl.
Thank you, it's a girl, it's a girl. So we're halfway along, so I'm due in October, so just-
Click or train.
Fun stuff. Can you believe it? One more. I don't know how I'll survive.
You could have danced all night.
Yeah. I don't know.
Look at this guy.
I know, I know. No comment over here. That was great. Good one-liner there.
I'm going to go home and share that with your husband.
I am, you know what we could have been doing? Other things.
All right, steady.
Yeah, steady, all right. Well, I mean, to be honest, it was a very slow session, and-
Apparently.
It was a very slow session in my house. I'll do the next comedy routine. Honestly, there were only 264 bills that passed this session, and that's actually a 22% drop over the last 10 years. And as we were going through session, we knew that it was, not a lot was going to pass, because honestly, not a lot was filed this year. There were a lot of big bills. At the end, there were a lot of choo-choo trains and stuff was just dying left and right, which is actually good, and I'm okay with that. I think it's okay when things die and stuff doesn't get passed that shouldn't. But some of the things that did get passed that do affect the city, one is a vacation rental bill. And a few years ago, we did deal with this issue with vacation rentals, where the state put a lockdown on what you could regulate and could not, and there wasn't a lot that you could. So there was a glitch bill that passed this year, and it does allow local governments to regulate vacation rentals with the following exceptions. They cannot specifically prohibit vacation rentals, and they cannot adopt ordinances regulating the duration of a vacation rental, how long it can be rented. But what you can do is you can authorize and adopt ordinances to address parking, noise, and other issues associated. But I will add that years ago, when this was, this bill passed, when they changed this law, there was a preemption in the language. For any ordinance that was adopted before June 1st, 2011, that language is still in there. So they did not remove that, that grandfather clause is still in there. But that did pass this year, and I know in the past, we fought that issue. And it does help, because you can deal with the noise and parking and other issues. So it did broaden the scope a little bit this year. Another issue that was brought to our attention from council was a flood insurance issue. And I know that got fixed on the federal level somewhat, but for the state, what they did was, they're going to allow insurance companies to fast-track their rate reviews with Office of Insurance Regulation for five years. They require flood policies to be at least as broad as the National Flood Insurance Policy, and expands the definition of flood to allow claims for damage from soil erosion resulting from a flood. And the bill requires policies to offer additional living expenses and to cover personal property. If any of you have constituents that need more information on that, because it's a large bill, I'm more than happy to research more and get back to you, because I know there were some constituents and some of you who emailed us personally about that. So just let me know. Another bill that passed that affects the city is there was a big ethics package that passed this year. And in that bill, it requires elected municipality officers to obtain four hours of ethics and sunshine law training annually, beginning January 1, 2015. It also allows local officials to abstain from voting if there's a conflict under a locally-adopted ethic standards and in specific quasi-judicial proceedings. The bill does not pertain a provision in there to restrict the ability of an elected official to lobby the legislature or the state. So that's something new that'll be coming around. If you need any more information on that, I'm happy to research that. Another bill that passed, it's an outdoor advertising bill. It was a Department of Transportation package. And in it, for, of interest to municipalities, the bill retains existing language relating to outdoor advertising that prohibits local governments from regulating public information systems, billboards, on water management district property. So that language is still in place. Another big bill that passed, you've probably heard about already, because it's been in the papers, is the tax cut bill. There was a big tax package that the governor wanted passed this year, and it was $500 million in tax cuts. $395 million of that was reduction of vehicle registration fees. But also in the bill, there was a $105 million cut to the following. You have your sales tax holiday again for schools, the hurricane preparedness sales tax holidays, youth bicycle helmets, medicinal pet food, energy-efficient products, college meal plans, car and booster seats, yay! Prepaid phone cards, and affordable housing. So that was a big tax package that will affect you personally. So if you like tax cuts, you might like some stuff in that bill. But also, the one thing in there that did really affect the cities was, it allows local governments to repeal or reduce their local business taxes without establishing an Equity Study Commission. So if you want to do that in the future, you, what?
We don't have one.
If you only had one, yeah.
That's right. But if you did, and you do have one in the future, then you can do what you want with it. And the last thing was an energy package. I've gotten emails from occasion from some of you about energy. And I believe that was a bill that our AG Commissioner wanted. And it didn't do everything that he wanted, it was watered down quite a bit. But in the legislation, it authorized the Department of Agriculture and Community Services to appoint a representative to the Southern States Energy Board, and it clarifies that DAX must promote all forms of renewable energy and not just solar. And in addition, the bill authorizes DAX to post information on alternative fueling stations and electronical vehicle charging stations to its website. And that is pretty much the highlights of session. Does anyone have questions?
Steve, just a minor point. What I don't see is the connection, the ethics training.
Yes, sir.
And it's got to be reported on the financial disclosure form. Other than it's a way to capture everybody, is there any other reason why it's done on the financial disclosure? Because it doesn't make a connection with me.
You mean, why you have to turn in the-
No, why do you have to put it on the financial disclosure form?
Go ahead.
I think it's just an easier way for the Commission on Ethics to track, because you do not have a lot of documents, I mean, it's not since it's supervisor of elect- I mean, she does get it from your Form 1, so you send a copy to the local person, but that way, it's all accessed as a one document, so it's a simplicity in filing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Audrey.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Well, yeah, and thank you very much, you did a great job, and you know what? We didn't get everything that we wanted our way, but who does, right? We usually-
You got money.
Anyway, no, we got money. Thank you very much. Everybody, please give the man.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, thank you, Carl.
See you later, bye-bye. All right, now, we need a presentation by staff on the renovations and remediation of the old recreation center. Oh, that would be you.
Yes, good evening. Nicole Perino, of course, Parks and Recreation Director. Just going to go over with you, we had to do some remediation and renovations to the old recreation center building. If I can get this to work here. There are pictures, I promise.
Oh, I thought we were just looking at that.
Okay. Which, this is, yeah, I'll tell you one. This is the, of course, the old recreation center building. It's the small building located right next to the recreation center, the main building. This currently houses our after-school, summer camp, various classes that we offer, mahjong, tai chi, things like that. We did have a massive water leak in January of this year, which caused us to do some renovations that were actually needed to the building. We just had to hurry up and do them now. If you can change it to the next one. In this issue with, it happened to be a plumbing leak is why we had this water leak. It did cause extensive damage to the building. 75% of the walls did have to come down and gutted, basically, the entire building had to be. And all the plumbing erased, completely gone in both restroom facilities. The next one. Some of the projects were already budgeted. The roof project and the flooring project were already budgeted. They did come out a little bit higher than were budgeted due to this extensive damage. They were in need of being replaced anyway, so we did budget those. We just had to get those done a little quicker. As you can see, we do have a cost breakdown of what was budgeted versus what we actually need. So part of this presentation is also letting you know that we do have a budget amendment resolution that we are asking for you to pass, hopefully, for the additional $55,060, $56,60 to have for this project. Switch to the next one. This is the roof project, this is the brand-new roof. It is green and pretty, and we did it matching the rest of the facility. This one, I didn't have a clear before shot. I didn't know I was doing this presentation. So I didn't have before and afters of the roof, unfortunately. So I do have the after, though, it is pretty and matches the rest of the building and the rest of the park. Next one. This is what our flooring looked like in the building before we renovated. What this picture doesn't show you, though, is we had huge mounds in this room. It was very uneven. Part of the, when you first walked in the door, it kind of was like you were standing on a pitcher's mound. It was that big. So it was in desperate need of renovation. This is what it looks like now. We made it very kid-friendly, since we do house most of the time our summer camp and after-school. So we made it as kid-friendly as possible. It does have the cushioned floor for our classes as well, but it is a multipurpose-type flooring.
Oh, how fun is that?
Yeah. This is our craft room, where we have different craft activities for the children. This is the before picture of this room as well. Switch to, there's the after. Same type of flooring, just in different colors. We did them in primary colors for the kids. So next one. This is what the restrooms looked like before. This building was built in 1972. So we did have the wood paneling and things like that throughout the building. And it was in need of renovation, which we wanted to do, but the water leak did kind of force us to do it a little sooner. So next one. This is during the project, where we had to rip everything out. The whiteboard that you see, you can see that it is bowing and bubbling. That, a lot of that is due to the water damage that we had. Next. So this is what it all had to come down to. And not only the restroom facilities, but the walls and the interior of the building had to come down to the studs as well, so that we could remediate. And here's the after. So now we have pretty clean, fresh, shiny restrooms. That's the men's room. But that's the project in a nutshell. We kind of wanted to, instead of just saying, oh, do a budget amendment, we need extra dollars for this. We wanted to show you what actually came out of the project. And now the building is usable. The kids are in there for summer camp today, right now. We have over 100 kids using the facility. So it has worked out very well for us.
Nicely done, nicely done. Thank you very much. Council, you have any questions or comments? Anyone want to make a budget to approve the amendment for the resolution?
I would be happy to do that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment resolution. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Okay, now, don't start thinking you can go busting pipes wherever you want to, so you can get things, right? That's not how this works. All right, no more, no more, Carl.
Yes, sir.
All right, all right. All right, thank you very much. Nice job. All right, now, to the consent agenda, Council. We have items A through F. Take a look at them, take your time, and is there anything you would like to pull? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, John.
In the spirit of full disclosure, I want to point out that in your errata sheet, you had some updates on the information on the unpaved roads.
Right.
We point out that those bids did come in higher than we anticipated, but we're still recommending going forward with the project.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion to approve with the errata and changes.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve as amended, and Janet seconds. Is there any other... Any other comments? Nope. Roll call, please.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
All right, well done. All right, public comment. At this time...
What did you pause?
It doesn't happen a lot here, but thanks, that's good. And at this time, if anyone would like to come up to the microphone and say nice things about us, you're allowed to do that, right? No, I'm just kidding. Public comment is this time, anyone wishing to speak at this time on any city-related project or anything, please come forward. Not you, John.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Susan Steed, and I'm the manager of Salon de J in Bonita Springs. We have two salons in Bonita Springs. And on March 26, the City Council of Bonita Springs approved Resolution 14 through 19. This resolution provided for two additional 15-day special occasion permits per year, granting a total of four permits available through March 30. It also phased out the Weekend Banner Program, and that's why we're here today. I've taken a petition out, excuse me, into the community and talked to business owners that use the Weekend Banner Program as we do. The Weekend Banner Program attests for about 25% of our new clients per year, and that's a lot of money for us. Our computer system tracks how people came to us, and our computer is telling us that 25% of our customers came through the Weekend Banner Program. So we're just here to see what we can do to get it reinstated. I have a petition here with about 35 business owners in the community that agree with us. I invited them to come here tonight to stand up with us, to let you know that we really need this program.
Well, thank you, and we really appreciate your input. Thanks. It's good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is John Pierce. I am the owner of Newbridge Fitness Health Club across the street and Win Properties. I've been a business owner since 1996 in Bonita Springs, the original owner of and founder of Gold's Gym here. I bought the gym back about three and a half years ago, when it was like had 250 members. It was a dying club. Two days before I bought it, they were going to lock the doors and sell all equipment because a big hitter came into town, Newbridge or LA Fitness, a corporate health club, corporate franchise, it's huge. So I had a big problem on my hand. Ever since I bought the club, I kind of brought the old-school gym back, customer service like no other, and I'm here to talk about the Weekend banners. Since I bought it three and a half years ago, my banners that I put out there are extremely helpful. I don't have deep pockets. I'm a small business owner. I'm not a corporate that has a million-dollar advertising budget on TV, you know, like Outback and Carrabba's that goes against our mom-and-pop restaurants here in town. But when I put my flags out, I get averaged about 30 to 80 new members. Recently, I mean, I'm over about 2,000-plus, I mean, you know, thousands of members now of three years of hard work. Every time those banners are out there, my flags are out there, it's amazing. I put out a postcard, 30,000 postcards every year, twice a year. Postcards really don't work no more. Everything I did in the '90s with Gold's Gym is gone. '90s was fat, and everybody was living happy. But with this economy and me going against this corporate animal right across the street, it's hard. And you take those flags away, I mean, they're not going to do flags like that. And every time I put my eight flags out, 15 days at a time, four times a year, you know, they're professional flags. I've had them professionally done. They're not cardboard, wood stakes, nothing like that, you know? I get members that come in every single day, every single day, every single day, and we kill it. And then all the flags go down, I'm dead for like two weeks. Nobody signs up. It's crucial. It's huge for my business, huge. I've never been here before, since 1996, in front of you guys. I've been here a long time, off and on, and I like to stay, and we're working really hard over there. And we are making leaps and bounds. So I really hope that we reinstate this permit. I just went down the other day to get my permit, and they okayed it, and they said, but you only have two flags out. My gosh, two flags? What's that? People can drive by a blink of eye and miss it. Usually, I have my eight flags out normally, and when they're out there, I mean, they just come in. It's really, really extremely helpful to my business. And just recently, I opened another business here in town. I opened a CrossFit Bonita, another health club. I bought $1,000 worth of professional flags. Can't use them now. So I hope that we can reinstate this. I hope we can continue help the small business owner instead of these corporate animals that are coming to town that I have to go against. And, you know, competition's great. Every day, I have somebody come over from another health club, say, you know what? We don't like it over there anymore. We're glad you're back, customer service. So I need those flags. They're very, very important to my business.
Thank you very much, bud.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you for coming by and telling us this. Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good afternoon. For the record, Kathy McGrath. I usually wait to the last public comment time to tell my happy stuff, positive stuff, but I thought I'd do it now. I just wanted you to know that the Special Events Committee is working very diligently on the July 4 event, which is always wonderful. And we had a discussion yesterday about it. We really want to thank Council for budgeting these wonderful events. We're in the trenches there. We are the ones that see the families come to us and say, this is wonderful, a free event. So, thank you. Now, the other thing I just wanted to bring up is I read the paper, paper, paper. And I found out that USA Weekend had a contest, and they called it Boomtown. And what they did was they asked people to write essays as to why your community should have this humongous, wonderful fireworks show. So I passed the word around, and I know some people wrote essays, not me. I don't want to mention names, because I might leave someone else, but Joanne did a beautiful job. Unfortunately, we didn't win. But I want to bring this up, because I want to tell you the two cities that did win. One of them is called Hamtramck, Michigan, and they were nominated because with over 25% of our residents below the federal poverty line, a contest like red, white, and you could be the only fireworks they may see. And the second one was Prescott, Arizona. They were nominated because last July, we all came together to mourn the loss of 19 young firefighters. This town needs a little spark put back in it. But next year, when this contest comes up, I'm going to remind everybody, and we've got to write the letters and tell them why we think Bonita Springs should be the recipient of this wonderful fireworks show. What do you think? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to first reading of public hearing of the following ordinances. Audrey, that is you.
Thank you. So the first one is a land use ordinance. It's in... I'll read the title block into the record. This is an amendment to the Bonita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4, zoning, amending Sections 4-735, Use Regulation Table for Mobile Home Districts to permit single families by right in certain neighborhoods zoned MH1 and MH2, prohibiting replacement of mobile homes in the interstate interchange area, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and an effective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance will be scheduled for a second reading on June 18, 2014, in these chambers, beginning at 9:30, 9:00 a.m. This is a land use ordinance, so public comment can be taken at this time. I do want to point out that the ordinance was modified since permission was asked. It was done in accordance with our staff discussion. As it is now, in the mobile home zoning districts, single-family development will be permitted by right for any individual redevelopment, such as Mr. Ferrera, if he needed to do a build-back, or Mr. Williams, if he waits a little bit longer, he doesn't have to put in an application for a special exception. However, if it's a redevelopment of an existing mobile home park, and it's under unified control of one developer or one owner, then it will require approval of planned development zoning. And the second change, which you saw previously, is the requirement for the interstate interchange area. Mobile homes are not permitted, and that was consistent with City Council's action in November.
But that is the only place that they're not prohibited from rebuilding back from mobile homes.
Correct.
Is in the interchange area.
Correct.
That's important. Yeah. Okay. Uh, yes, you want to...
In that area, the question was, can you build a stick home, a wood home, as opposed to putting in a mobile home? And the answer is yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Good, okay. Let's go to, if we don't mind, Council, we'll go to public comment at this time. Any members of the public wishing to speak at this time, please come forward.
Hi, Dave Williams again. Thank you for giving me this moment. I just want to say I'm here to support it. Now, I came up to the community development with Philly, the owner of Lee Corp, manufacturing homes up on 41, and he presented at the time some documentation to Mike Fegan about some other instances in the state where he's built in manufacturing homes where people did own their land. He's never ran into anything like this, but other than Bonita Springs, where they required you to do a special exception. So this was unusual for him, and this is probably the first that we've seen here in this area for anybody wanting to do what I want to do, and probably for the future of this area. So I'm just here to say that from what I, my experience and what he's sharing with me, that nobody else in the state is requiring to do special exceptions but Bonita Springs. So it's something that I support, that you guys can mouse the bill, do it just by getting the permission of our community and doing a permit. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward on this item only. Seeing none, Council, what's your pleasure? You want to send this to second reading?
Motion to send it second reading.
Motion to send it second reading. And there's the second of the bill. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Okay. Item B, next, please.
Thank you. This is first reading of the following ordinance. This is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land within the Wood Sage, Heron Glen, and Heron Cove neighborhoods of Pelican Landing, lying contiguous to and being in the same county as the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Section 9, Township 47 South, Range 25 East, assignment to City Council District 1, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading. The second reading will be held on June 18, 2014. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication, which is on file with the city clerk, and it is legally sufficient. Mr. Schwing may provide any background if you have any questions.
Okay. Anything?
I think the Council knows what this is.
Yeah, I think everyone knows what this is. We'll go to... If you don't mind, we'll go to public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to speak to this, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. What's your pleasure, Council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, yes. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye. Okay. And we are to item 10, second reading and public hearing.
And the first ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land within the Sanctuary Lakes and Pelican Landing, Unit 22 subdivisions, that are contiguous to and being in the same county as the city of Bonita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Sections 8 and 9, Township 47 South, Range 25 East, assignment to City Council District 1, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient. Mr. Schwing or Community Development can provide you with any backup if you have any questions.
Okay, and Council, let's go to public comment. Anyone, a member of the public wishing to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Council, you know what this is about? What would you like to do?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Michael here. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Okay, and we are to item B. And Audrey, this is the one that Council has said that instead of having discussion on or anything like that, we are going to go ahead and continue to date certain July[1589.83]
Chapter 3, Development Standards, and Chapter 4, Zoning, relating to large-scale retail establishments. An amendment to Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 3, Development Standards, amending Sections 3 dash 262 Lighting Standards, and 3 dash 263 Bike Ways and Pedestrian Ways to have additional standards for large-scale retail establishments, creating Sections 3 dash 426 Landscaping Standards for Large-Scale Retail Establishments, creating Section 3 dash 427 Community Space Standards for Large-Scale Retail Establishments, creating Section 3 dash 440 Public Transit Facilities for Large-Scale Retail Establishments, creating Section 3 dash 497 Building Design Standards for Large-Scale Retail Establishments. An amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4, Zoning, amending Section 4 dash 843 Use Regulations for Conventional Commercial Districts, amending Section 4 dash 934 Use Regulations for Planned Development Districts, creating Section 4 dash 1563, Section 4 dash 1563 Supplementary Regulations for Large-Scale Retail Establishments, setting for provisions for purpose, applicability, definitions, procedures for approval, development regulations, and building placement, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and effective date. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient. I do want to point out, as the mayor mentioned, May 21st meeting, city council said that they would start this second reading, take public comment if there is any, but then they would continue it to a time and date certain of July 2nd, beginning at 5:30 PM.
Okay, council, and if you don't mind, if there's no objection, I'm going to go ahead and go to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak at this, to this matter at this time, please come forward. Seeing none, council, I'll entertain a motion to continue this to July 2nd?
Still moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Longcart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Sacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Okay, item C.
This is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Table 4 dash 843 Use Regulations for Conventional Commercial Districts to require that any properties having certain uses within 100 feet from US 41 Tammy Ray Trail be permitted only by planned development or special exception, providing for conflict, severability, codification, inclusion in code, scrivener's errors, and an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient. John Dolmer is here if you have questions pertaining to this ordinance.
Okay, I'm going to go to public comment first. If any members of the public wish to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, council, do you have any questions or concerns, any conversation about this? Anything for John?
Um.
Yeah, what do you need, bud? What's going on, Mike?
Well, I know it pertains to certain types of businesses, and the whole reason we're doing this to me is to make it look nicer along. Why wouldn't it just apply to everything?
Apply to?
All businesses. Why are we singling out certain businesses, not others?
Well, what we did was we relied upon what previous councils had done along the Benita Beach Road Corridor, and we thought that that process had been relatively successful, and the intent and direction of the council at the time guided us in that direction. If we're looking for different architectural standards or certain processes that be in place for other uses, I'm more than happy to listen and to modify however you wish.
I have a better answer than that.
Yes, sir.
I think the reason that we did that are that some uses are of, are of such intensity or controversial nature that they do require, or it is always best to have the public take a look at that, to be sure that they follow conditional standards, or that, that council can actually put other conditions upon them that will help them so far as lighting or buffering, so that they can better fit into the other ones. Some other uses, or preferred uses, you might call them, that, and it is prejudicial in a way, they, they don't require that because they're of such limited intensity, they really don't require a second look. And, and that's the rationale behind requiring the special exception for some. Just the same reason that in our land development code, there are already some uses that always require a special exception, consumption on premises, blah, 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 that kind of thing. It, it, you need, before you can have a bar built outside to where everybody's drinking outside, you want them to come before council, so council can see, what does the neighborhood look like? Is this going to mess with anybody's head? What's going on? That, is that the reason?
You actually explained the part that I just went by over, so I'm glad you were here.
I go one more?
Go ahead.
I agree with you, I agree with you. I just want to point out one more. On the types of uses that are allowed are on pages three through 10 of the ordinance. There are a lot of different uses, and if you start saying that every use has to go through planned development, you've basically stripped their right to the conventional zoning that they already have, the existing conventional zoning. So, in order to not take everybody and require everybody to go through this process, and some already have to go through that process, the uses that were selected were considered the harsher uses, or the, the more uses that you want to make sure you can use conditions. Because when you go through rezoning, you cannot condition conventional zoning. So, the only time I can, you know, or me, you or you, can put conditions on the zoning is if it is actually in the book saying so. But you don't need that for everything. If you want to take a look and see if there's something you think are necessary.
I understand, you know, say like a automotive garage, you know, you want the doors on the backside, so it looks nicer along the road. But, I know the tattoo parlors in there, or salons in there?
No, they are not.
What would be the difference between?
Are you talking about hair salons?
Like a hair salon. Why, why would a tattoo parlor be different than a hair salon?
Yes.
As far as the outside appearance, anyway.
The outside appearance, it, this was, this was a council request that it be included. There are situations in which they can be much more intense than a personal service-type business, which is where they are located in the land development code. You'll see it's listed as Personal Services Group 4, as opposed to specifically tattoo parlors. And those type of uses can, on occasion, be more intense or...
Different hours.
Well, it's different hours, but it's also a use that you may want to consider in terms of location and design. Not always, and not with every use, but that's kind of the definition of a special exception.
Well, let's, let's face it, let's face it. There's a perception issue, too. I mean, you know, from the public standpoint, if you ask somebody from Benita Bay if they want a tattoo parlor across from the entrance to Benita Bay, if they think that that's an appropriate use there, what are they going to say? They're not going to like it, right? So, you, what we're trying to do is give people an opportunity. I, I got to tell you, I caught holy hell, and there I said hell, oh my gosh. I caught holy hell because the, because of a putt-putt place was allowed to be put putt-putt golf, not a tattoo, not, not a bar, putt-putt golf in front of Pelican Landing. So, some of these uses, we have found through experience, you know what? People need to be able to have a right to come in here, let's, let's hear what you think about it, let's find out if the neighborhood, what they think. We all want to hear what the public has to say on these things. Council has proved that 100,000 times up here. You are affected by what the public says. If you are serious about that, then when it comes to these more controversial-type uses, that's why we require that process. And that's the easy answer. Whether it's right or not, I'll leave that up to you. Is that, is that true, too?
Yes, sir. I received several of those phone calls as well. I, so, this is really a policy decision, and, and it depends upon how this council feels. The mayor's exactly right. There are uses that are more intense, whether through perception or through actual practice of that business, that this council may want to have the ability to consider in terms of not only the use, but also the location and the design. You can do that through a special exception, you can do that through a planned development. If this council chooses not to take this path and to allow them by right, they would be allowed to come in, simply go into an existing building, file for building permits to construct their building, and go about their business as long as they meet these regular standards of the conventional zoning district. So, depending upon how this board feels will depend upon how we process these applications.
Yeah, but, but if the public doesn't get to comment on these things, they're going to comment anyway after it's built, and they're not going to like it. They're not going to like the fact that, gee, if I lived in a sterile, I would be able to have something to say about what was going in on there. And we're not doing that on all uses. What we're doing is on, the more, the uses that we've kind of, we're suggesting, the uses that, that we've heard that people complain about, about the intensity.
That's exactly right.
And, and so, it doesn't mean that they can't build it. It just means that, look, bring it in here, maybe there's something we can do to soften it, so.
And like, and this kind of goes back to what I was saying originally, the Benita Beach Road Corridor overlay has been relatively successful. It is, it is almost identical, not identical, but very close to what we're proposing tonight. And that's why we kind of chose that direction, because those uses were, were identified in the past. The implementation of that corridor has been relatively successful, as far as I can tell, and we have brought that for your consideration.
Okay, and, and, and Mike, I mean, if you, if you've got another suggestion or something like that, you'd be welcome to bring it before council here and see, see what council thinks about the whole concept. Because if the whole concept's wrong for, for council, if we don't want to do this, we shouldn't be doing it. So, anyway, any, any other comments?
No, I just, you know, I was trying to figure out why it affects one business and not another, which seemingly, I, I mean, some people are anti-tattoo. They're afraid of the element that it's going to bring in. I'm not a tattoo person, I would never get one myself, but I don't have a problem with people that get tattoos, so I don't see an issue with having one at my local super, you know, strip mall.
My sons are both tattooers, so I'm going to, I'm going to catch it for this, so.
[laughing]
And I'm not getting one either, if, unless they catch me while I'm sleeping. Anyway, that's frightening. Uh, any other comment on this? Any other questions for John?
Nope.
And, and from a pure property standpoint, rights standpoint, I, I feel what you're talking about, too. Okay, thank you, John. Okay, uh, we had public comment, right? Council, what's your, what's your pleasure? Would you like to go ahead and pass this ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Make a motion to accept it?
Second.
And we have a second. We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Sacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longcart.
Aye.
Okay, item D. Audrey.
Thank you. This is an ordinance creating operational requirements for outdoor flea markets supplemental to the special event permit, providing for conflicts of law, severability, inclusion in codes, scrivener's errors, and effective date. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient. The ordinance is for a second reading. Laura Taylor can provide you with any backup or background if you have any questions about it.
I should call her up here just to make her walk all the way up here, because she sits all in the back, back there. Never mind.
She'll come up, anyway.
[laughing] Mike says he has a question for you.
[laughing]
Yeah, think of something quick, yeah.
Think of something quick.
You guys are going to do this. Not asking.
Ms. Taylor? Um, yes, hello. Mike?
It's Mike.
I just want to make sure that we have been working with the Lions Club, and there's not any issues with them whatsoever.
We have been, and they're going to be applying for this once it's approved.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other, any other feedback so far as all the rest of them, or anything like this? I mean, this is, this has gone pretty well.
It's, it's gone pretty smoothly. Um, we have been in contact with the local Roots Farmers Market as well, and they have an application pending to apply for a farmers' market. Um, the Lions Club will move to apply for the outdoor flea market once it's approved, so I think it'll work out nicely for both groups.
Thank you very much. Nicely done.
Thank you.
All right, good. Any other questions? Uh, now, we'll go to public comment. Any members of the public wishing to speak at this time on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Council, what's your pleasure?
Move the ordinance, please, for adoption.
We're going to move the ordinance to adopt, and there's a second by Councilwoman Sacta. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Sacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longcart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Pleasure. All right, city attorneys report, as if that isn't what you've been doing all along here, right? But go ahead. What do you have for us today? You got anything else?
No, sir.
Oh, okay, well, good. Uh, city manager report. Carl, what do you have for us today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John's going to give us a report on beach re-nourishment.
We had a very productive meeting with our partners over at the county today, a pre-construction meeting with the contractor that is now been given the task to go ahead and start the beach re-nourishment project. The initial steps that the contractor's going to be taking are things that won't be obvious. They, they actually pre-assemble some of the piping they're going to be using in 1,000-foot strips and then bring it in, so you won't see that right away. But, the estimate at this point, as of today's meeting, was that we will actually see construction of the beach project starting probably the last week in June, and it will run to the first week in August. They will be running 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That's so that it can move up and down the beach as quickly as possible, and as you know from past experiences, it does impact the use of that beach section as it moves up and down, but they are pretty good about moving those pipes and letting people have access to the beach once it's completed and they've moved on to the next section. So, we are actually up and running.
Well, good. That didn't take, yeah, it did. It took a long, it took a long time. All right, good. Any other questions for John about the beach re-nourishment or anything? Do you have anything else for us?
Nope.
That's it? Okay, good deal. Uh, mayor and council items, we have this one walk-on. I'll take the liberty if I could there. Brad, is Brad Cornell still there? Hey, Brad, how you doing? Could you come on up here for a second? In case I get this wrong, you can go ahead and correct me right away. Uh, Brad was good enough to send me a letter, uh, in the, the letter was from the Audubon. What there is, and I'm just going to go ahead and paraphrase this quickly and then let you back me up here, hopefully, there is a piece of property that, that I think that the, from the crew trust standpoint, uh, as chairman of the crew, and Brenda from the crew, we've, we both sent a, a letter on behalf of the crew to the governor to have Florida Forever Fund spent on a piece of property to, it's the Garg, how do you say it?
Gargiulo.
Gargiulo, dang it. Gargiulo property, uh, and it's to the east of here, and it's a real important piece of property for the crew lands. And as you know, the crew lands are really important to Benita Springs, they're important to the entire, uh, system here. And I think it's really best said in this Audubon letter. It says, restoration of this piece of property has the potential to improve water quality in overburdened Golden Gate, Maine, and East Naples basins by storing water on the site. And, and et cetera, et cetera. That's what we really want to do. Uh, I think it's an important piece, and, and what I'm asking is council's permission to send a letter on your behalf to the governor and, and everyone else who will listen, that we support that, and we support that acquisition. And, any, anything else to add, or anything I messed up there, Brad?
Well, you know, Crew has a lot of in holdings, with a few exceptions, like Edison Farms is 4,000 acres. This piece is 620 acres, almost 620 acres. So, it's a good opportunity, it's actually two parcels owned by the Gargiulo Land Trust. Uh, it's a good opportunity to get a big chunk of, of important land that can be restored. Some of it is already cypress, but it's all overdrained because it's been managed for agriculture for years. And so, this is an opportunity to put some ditch blocks in, to get a lot of good hydrologic, as well as habitat benefits for the whole region. So, that's, and the DEP has some, about $20 million of Florida Forever Funds that they have not spent. That's another issue. But that's going to be reallocated to the Water Management District. It's an opportunity now to weigh in with the governor and say, hey, you know, this is a great time to prioritize this piece of land for acquisition by those Florida Forever Funds. It helps also balance, if you think of the political balancing that goes on statewide, a lot of money has gone in this recent budget signed by the governor to the East Coast as a consequence of all the impacts to the estuary from Lake Hocky Choby last summer. We got some. We got $18 million for the C-43 reservoir, which is tremendous. This would also help complement that in the western basins that we would like to see some attention to.
Good. And Brad, thank you very much for bringing it to my attention. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your attention to it.
And thank you for everything you do. Uh, and council, with that, I'd entertain a motion to go ahead and allow me to sign a letter drafted by council.
I'll make the motion.
Yes, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Sacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longcart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, and we probably best send that by email as well, because it's pretty timely, right?
Time is, is, is pretty short, so if you can do it this week, that would be great.
And he, he's, you got it? Okay, thank you very much, Brad. Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and start down here with Bill. Bill, do you have anything for us today?
I do. Uh, I had the opportunity to be at the memorial service, and I want to thank Steve and Steve for their presentations. They're always good. And also to have the opportunity to hear Mr. Romano from Benita Bay talk about his family and his history in the military, and it was a very moving experience for me, and I certainly appreciated. Everybody was there. The, the crowd was, I think it gets larger every time we have one of those. And it's, uh, it was a wonderful time, and a very solemn time, and I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. I'm going to skip over to Councilman McIntosh. What do you have for us today?
Uh, just very quickly, I'd like for Carl and staff to take a look at the question about flags. If we've really damaged the small businesses, maybe we unintentionally did something we thought we were doing right. If there's a petition signed, let's check with those businesses, please, and see if we can do something to make sure we haven't hurt them.
Happy to do that, sir. Yes.
Good, good.
Secondly, I had a meeting day at the university. Florida Gulf Coast University is going to have 15,000 students next year. They graduated their 20,000th student over the weekend and ceremonies, and building the, the, what will be the beds for 5,000th student in, on campus. So, it's about one-third of all the people, students will be able to stay on campus. Great asset for economic development and for our community in general. So, thank you for those of you who support the university.
Thank you very much. Good. Mike, what do you have for us today?
Well, I just want to echo Councilman McIntosh's, uh, bringing up the flag issue for the businesses. I want to check into that. And, other than that, I'm sorry I was late, and, uh...
No, that's okay. Oh, and, and along that line, could you, let's be sure that the record shows that the Councilman Simmons here has, is absences excused. He told us he wasn't going to be here. I want to be sure that's part of that. All righty, what is this?
Reminder, you forgot that resolution. You missed the other one.
Okay. I don't know, this is going to take a while. Uh, okay, Janet, what do you have for us?
Um, one, one thing that, um, I wanted to bring to everyone's attention was that Benita Springs Utilities came out as the top company raising over $10,000 for Relay for Life. So, that was pretty awesome. And they were also, their sleepwalkers team was in the top three fundraising team. So, very, very cool, and a, a big shout out to our own utility company for participating in that. It means a lot to a lot of people. And, also, I was, wanted to just let you know about a couple of things going on at our recreation